Good morning. It is September 25th. We are here for a special by-county meeting. We have a full slate of commissioners from both counties. We have both county administrators here and our clerk of the board, and it is time we'll call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have a large agenda here today. The first item is the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Recovery Center update, and I guess we'll turn it over to the Benton County Commissioners and maybe the administrators?
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll have our Assistant Administrator, Matt Raspieson, come up and where we're at.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Good morning, Matt.
Let me get this positioned a little bit. It's a little close. So, I know it's been several months since we've all been together to talk about where the Recovery Center is. I believe the Commissioners are all aware. We have the two facilities. One notable change there is that we had an opportunity to purchase the Bruno facility and not have that 25-year lease, and so we were able to negotiate a discount, did price for that, so we decided to go ahead and purchase that facility outright. Ultimately, we'll end up saving the county a couple of million dollars over the term of that lease, and so we did take advantage of that to have that. Also, makes it significantly easier when dealing with federal funding and state funding when you outright own the property versus leasing it. There's a lot of requirements they have for leases, so that's a notable change there on the Bruno facility. We've been regularly meeting with the Benton Franklin Behavioral Health Advisory Committee. Sorry, there's a bunch of them there. And so, there's been a lot of discussion around what services should be included at the Recovery Center. We're still have the main focus of the four core services, which is the crisis stabilization, the secure withdrawal management or detox, and the residential inpatient treatment. So, those have, and then a 23-hour observation. So, those have not changed, but there's a lot of discussion around, okay, we have a lot of square footage here, what other services are needed. And then also, I think your boards might be aware that there's a movement to stand up some interim services. A sobering center specifically is being discussed as something that could be stood up. In the meantime, I believe we have a proposal from Lord's Health to potentially stand one up here, actually just across the street, I think, is where they're looking at doing that, and that would be a service that could come onboard significantly quicker than the Recovery Center itself. So, a lot of discussions around that going on at the Advisory Committee. I believe they're going to have some recommendations coming up in their October meeting as far as how to move forward with that one, that would then come back to each of the boards of Commissioners individually for decisions. As far as the construction part of it goes, the counties, we had a selection committee which composed of a representative from each county, a representative from the provider, which is comprehensive health care that we've were looking at contracting with them, and then some advisory committee members worked through a selection process for a design-build team, ultimately ended up selecting the team of Bowden Construction and NAC Architecture, both based out of Spokane, but Bowden does have a strong presence here in the Tri-Cities. So, we are working through a contract with them. I believe we expect to award that shortly, and then we're going to enter what we call our validation phase, and so we're going to go through, it's sort of like a master planning effort that we're going to go through with the facilities to, how do we position each service that best suits working together and also sets us up for long-term success in bringing other services into there, because we need to be sure that as we bring in adult services and youth services, and then the different types of crisis stabilization and withdrawal and detox, those all have special restrictions on access and sight and sound and everything else, and so we want to have a team come in who deals with behavioral health facilities and help us determine what makes the most sense. Where do these go? How big should they be? And so, that's going to be a couple of month effort here. We're going to, it sounds like we may go visit some large facilities and look at what they've done, and then work closely with the provider and that design team and start master planning that out, and then after that, we would move into the actual design-construction phase of those first four key services. So, that's where we are with that construction. We should start seeing some significant progress here in the next two to three months. We'd like to see some renderings coming out to show people, hey, this is really happening and we're continuing forward. We are continuing, we are working on the KGH facility a little bit. We have two facilities, maintenance people out there full-time. They've been working really hard to clean up the facility, get the grounds cleaned up, remove the old signage. They've cleaned the building out of all the debris and anything that was damaged from vandalism or water damage, and so they're continuing to work and make progress, and now they're trying to repair some of the HVAC systems as we're getting into winter time. They're trying to get those back up and running to keep the building in better shape as we go through the winter. So, we aren't, it isn't just sitting there falling apart. We've got a crew out there taking care of it and maintaining it and trying to get things functioning, and then that way, when that design team comes in, it's not just a old abandoned, fallen apart building. Let me see here, is there anything else? We are working on, we're working with the state and federal legislature, seeking some additional funding. As we've all experienced, the cost of construction and standing up these things has increased substantially, especially in the last few years, and so why we believe we have funding to get those four core services up, we'd like to get a little bit more so that we aren't having to make hard decisions as we go through that design-build process. We'd like to be able to get the best facility that we can and not have to postpone certain pieces of it. So, we've talked with the state and the federal legislature. We're going to be gearing up to make another ask at the congressional-directed spending opportunity that'll come up here in probably March of next year, and then we are working also at the state side for additional grants through the Department of Commerce as those opportunities come up, though those seem to be a little more limited now. They tend to not want to provide additional funding for projects that are already funded through their programs, so those usually end up being direct asks to the state legislature, which we're going to be continuing to work on, trying to get some funding there. I'm trying to think anything.
Well, Commissioner Diddy, we took advantage of Matt being on vacation last week, and we signed the contract with Bowden.
Oh, okay.
And Thursday is our first meeting, or Wednesday is our first meeting with the design team, to sit down with them. All, I think, I think half the day's been set aside to sit down with them and start talking, so.
And I do, we do have our Director of Operations, Robert, with us here, and he's managing that side of it, so he would have more details possibly on exact timeframes on when we could expect to see certain milestones if the Commissioners wanted to see that.
And then this last weekend, we had, they had, the Recovery Coalition had a run, kind of fund run fundraiser. I think they raised about, I think, 20,000, 27,000 or something like that. Anyways, the representative from the Bowden Company was there, and I said that he would have it finished by the end of next year, so.
Two items on that, too. One is obviously, you know, the purchase of the building. We were able to, you know, there was a reduction or they had put an incentive for us to purchase it, and also, we went ahead and worked to go ahead and get more of a reduction in price on that. So, I think in the long run, for the by-counties, it was a significant savings during the way that ended up happening. And two, I think, this is going to be a discussion, ongoing discussion is for mental health and substance abuse, when people come in there to use the facilities, I really want, even though I know it's going to be open for the entire state, I want to really see how we can go ahead and make that till we have enough beds or places for people here locally to be served first. And then, at that point in time, if we make this a productive facility that around the state, they can use us as an example of what we've done to put other places to help more people. But I do think it's important that we look at ways and verbiage to be able to use it for the people here in Benton Franklin County. So, I think that's going to be important as we step forward in this.
So, is there questions, Commissioners?
So, two points. First, I've been an advocate for a number of years of these by-county programs. It's nice to be sitting here, listening to your, the plans and the efforts to get the additional funding, and I'm reminded how much more difficult this would be if we were trying to do this in parallel, and both of us sitting here trying to go to the legislature and compete for funds. So, as I've said before, I not only think it's a good idea for these by-county programs, I think we have a duty to work together. So, thank you for taking the lead on this one. In the future, I expect at some point Franklin County will take the lead on some other program or project, and we'll partner there as well. Second thing is, and I am imagining that this is probably premature, but is there anything you can share about initial thoughts as to revenue streams? Commissioner, your comment a minute ago about, you said it politely, but I think what I heard was some sort of priority for local citizens whose taxpayers contributed heavily, you know, to this effort. Not that there aren't a lot of statewide and federal dollars involved, too, but if you've given much thought to what sort of revenue stream for people who are receiving services, insurance, or if they're from the west side of the state, is that county going to help compensate for those services? Any thoughts on that?
We can refer to Matt a little bit.
Okay.
So, I mean, we've had some discussions, particularly with the provider. Obviously, we want to be able to accept Medicare/Medicaid, but that opens that up to where we have to accept anybody who has Medicare/Medicaid, and so that's obviously a revenue stream. We've had a lot of discussions. Both counties have that 1/10th of 1% mental health and chemical dependency sales tax, and I think at least our Commissioners have discussed wanting to ensure that people from Benton County who don't have access to Medicare/Medicaid or private insurance would be able to be covered by that. Obviously, Franklin County would need to make that decision on their own how they wanted to do that. There also is, at least for the next 17 years, the opioids settlement funding that is coming in. We're having discussions regionally about pooling all of those dollars for that timeframe to make sure that the operation, to put that towards operation of the Recovery Center, to pay for those kind of things, to make sure we prioritize regional citizens. Those discussions have led to some initial conversations with other counties about participation in that, and I think we would have to see where those go. You know, we have many surrounding counties who are much smaller, who obviously don't have the resources or really the need to stand up their own facility, but are looking for access to those services, and so there'd have to be some discussion with them. There's some interest that they are all receiving the same opioid settlements, and they may be interested in providing some of that funding towards this facility so that they could send some of their residents here. But we obviously have to temper that with the number of available beds. It's challenging to build these facilities. You're limited to 16 beds in a unit, and then you have to have a separate, totally standalone unit beyond that, and otherwise you get into what's known as an institute for mental disease, which automatically disqualifies you from receiving Medicare/Medicaid funds. And so, there's a really fine line there to walk with how you combine these services, how you get the number of beds you need to have, and then how you provide it. So, it's a big learning curve for me, and I'm glad to have a lot of support from the people in the community who are much more well-versed in this, but it's something that we are navigating to try to make sure that we prioritize the residents of Benton and Franklin County, but also still stand ourselves up as a regional facility and a model for the rest of the state, so.
And I think it's, my original concept was, after visiting, is the first 24 hours, somehow our funding would cover that first 24 hours, so that, so, you know, the staff or the provider isn't worried about how they're going to pay for that first, you know. They bring the person in. They're not sitting there trying to figure out, do they have Medicare/Medicaid or whatever, that, you know. You can figure that once you get them in there, start treatment. Then you can figure out if you're, at least cover, I still think is valid, cover the first 24 hours, that they're not having to worry about how they're going to bill it or where they're going to bill it to, is just so you're not refusing people, because I don't want to refuse anyone at the door, right? Everyone comes in, and if we, we'll cover the, I don't know if you had those discussions with the provider yet, but to cover that first 24 hours, right? So, they're not worried about that. So, you're not, yeah. The whole idea is not to refuse anyone coming in.
And that would be, that would be like a receiving area where it wouldn't be part of your 16-bed unit, would it?
It would be, so, at least the current thought is that would be a separate unit, so it wouldn't be part of the 16. They, it was called a 23-hour observation unit, and I apologize, the legislature changed the name here in the last legislative session. I don't recall what it, but basically, it's a, they use more of what's known as a recliner model, so there are not beds per se. There's a large open area with basically recliner chairs. People come in, they can be there for less than 24 hours. I don't know exactly why they call it a 23-hour, but it's less than 24.
23 hours and 59 minutes.
23 hours and 59 minutes.
Observation.
And so, that's where they would come in. That would be the initial receiving area. They would then be assessed and then decided, do they need to be, you know, is 23 hours and 59 minutes enough? Do they need to be moved to a higher level of care? Do they need to be referred to outpatient care? They would make those decisions in that initial timeframe and move them to the appropriate level of care after that.
How many 16-bed units were you thinking about putting together?
Well, for initially, we're going, it's interesting, the way that the state classifies it is, they consider, even if it's different services, so crisis stabilization and detox, those have to be distinctly, so you can't combine those and have 32 beds. They have to be, so initially, we're just going to start with one 16-bed unit of each service, and then make a determination from there as to, okay, how many more beds do we need regionally and make some decisions. They have to be, not only operate separately, in certain cases, if they're exactly the same service, they may, the state even looks at, they want some geographic separation between those, not, a wall usually doesn't suffice. They would say, hey, if you're going to have 32 crisis stabilization beds, we're probably going to want to see the second 16 beds in a different building. And so, those are things that are going to have to be evaluated. But right now, we have nothing, and so 16 is going to be a whole lot better than we have, and then I think we can make some determinations regionally about, how many more do we need and where should those beds go?
So, any other questions?
Hopefully, we'll have a ribbon cutting in the next year.
That would be awesome.
The unit that you're talking about building is going to be just one unit, and that is down there downtown Kennewick?
Yeah, so, the current thought is, is that the receiving area, the crisis stabilization unit, and the secure withdrawal management or detox, those three services would likely go in the Bruno Street facility. And the primary reason for that is we have that limitation on putting crisis stabilization at the KGH building, and we really feel like those three services need to be located together so that when someone comes in in that receiving area, when they're referred to one of the other two, it's literally a walk down the hallway instead of a transport in a vehicle. And so, that was the initial reasoning. Obviously, we're still working through with the design team and the provider to make sure that that's viable, but that's where we started, and then people who know better than all of us may have better ideas, and so we're certainly open to that. And then the residential treatment, which we don't have a restriction on timeframe or anything like that, that's likely to go at the KGH facility. And so, that would be the initial four, and then from there, we'll decide, how many more do we need and where should they go?
Just curious if you've gotten to the point yet where you have any initial budget projections for your revenue needs?
We haven't gotten to that point yet. We've had some discussions just off the wall with the provider. They, they're obviously comfortable that, you know, with the revenue that's being generated by the 1/10th of 1%, it would more than cover the cost of those services. Quite a few, quite a bit of it is billable to Medicare/Medicaid and private insurance. Even some of that first 24 hours is billable, and I think we're, what our discussion was, is we want to make sure that people are covered, and the provider said, well, that's great, but we will still bill for that if it's billable, and we would only go back to the counties if that was not a billable service otherwise. So, that will help satisfy what Commissioner Delvin is looking for, but also, at the same time, making sure we're using the best, best use of our local resources and stretching those as far as we can.
Yeah. There are a number of avenues and opportunities for state and federal funding, and Commissioner Delvin's background and experience, he's proved to be quite adept at reaching into the legislature's pocket, still trying to figure out how he does that, but I'll copy it if I can. Anyway, I'm kind of looking at both the upfront capital costs and then the longer-term recurring operating costs, and I agree that the 1/10th between the two counties is going to provide a good stream. But of course, we'll have other mental health needs as well. It'll tap into those funds, too, but more importantly, as we think further down the road about multiple facilities, that's going to require even a greater revenue stream. So, just doing some initial investigation and education as to where those revenue streams are that we can tap over time as this, I think, really exceptional program matures, so.
Matt, just want to say thank you. You've done a, I'm glad you're on this. You're doing a great job. A lot of research involved, and thank you for everything you're doing.
No, absolutely. Happy to be a part of it. It's a really big need in the community, and it's an honor to be able to be a part of bringing this to fruition, so. If I can answer any other questions?
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, I just would be remiss if I didn't tell, give a big thanks to that, the Recovery Coalition and that advisory board that we all put together, remember, to advise us, because we don't run those facilities, and we need people that have experience both in treatment and, and so I think that it's been very valuable that we set that thing up and got that thing going to help us put this together.
Yeah, it has been. The meetings are great. They're informative. The people work really well together, and I think we're seeing a lot of good discussions, and that's going to lead to even better services, so.
It's a community effort, and that's what it takes.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, well, thank you. That moves us down to therapeutic courts. Update on by-county drug court.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I want to just, I want to thank Matt also. The Recovery Center is going to directly affect, impact the therapeutic courts here in Benton Franklin Counties, so I'm excited to see that, and I'm hopeful it will be up and running really soon, so. So, why am I here? I appreciate the, a couple of weeks ago, I was in front of you about the challenges for Drug Court and brought some issues to your attention, and happy to report that we have some positive news, and that has since transpired. I also like to update the Franklin County Board with respect to the numbers and totals that I provided at the last meeting and has since changed. I also like to thank the Benton County Board to ask me to come and kind of give you an update. So, as the Commissioners know, there are five therapeutic courts here in both Benton Franklin County, Drug Court being the only by-county therapeutic court. As many of the Commissioners know, there's the Veterans Court and Benton County District Court, the Mental Health Court and Benton County District Court, and now the therapeutic court or the, what is it? It is another drug court and Benton County District Court, and then Judge Roscoe is now, as the Board for Franklin County know, that she just started her new program with mental health and another form of drug court or therapeutic court. So, with that said, there are five independent therapeutic courts and Drug Court being the by-county Drug Court. It's really important, I think, for you to kind of get a concept of what Drug Court really is all about. It'd be remiss to tell you that we've had, you know, some changes throughout Drug Court in the last 20 years. We've recently reworked our procedures with respect to the mission statement, the qualifications and disqualifications to get into a by, into a by-county Drug Court. I'd just like to read to you a little bit about just, I know I've sent out a number of emails, or Tiffany has, with respect to the manual and what, what things we've done, but I think I'd like to read you about what really Drug Court's about. What's the mission? And I think that's really imperative for the Commissioners to know. The mission of Drug Court is as follows. It is the mission of Benton Franklin County Adult Drug Court to advance the safety and well-being of our community, to heal and rehabilitate high-risk, high-need offenders, and to conserve judicial system resources. This will be achieved through the diversion of qualified offenders to a program of comprehensive treatment and education, offender accountability, and intense court supervision designed to help participants gain control of their lives and stop the cycle of recidivism caused by their addiction. And I think that's important to note. That's the goal of Drug Court. It also is the goal of Drug Court to make sure that we are fiscal responsible with budgetary needs of the both counties. And as I alluded to, I think it was in the Benton County Board meeting, about the eligibility of individuals that are qualified or will be qualified for Drug Court. I think it's an opportunity to tell the both boards that we just don't take anybody. It, they have to be eligible. To the extent that they're eligible, there are a couple of criterias that we look at. One is that the adult offender is diagnosed with a substance or some use disorder. So, they first have to be qualified to be as a substance abuse individual that needs help. But also, to be eligible or ineligible, if you will, not have any prior sex offenses, convictions or pending sex offenders as provided by the statute. They also must, and this is really important when it comes to adding cases or impacting the clerk's office or the prosecutor's office or the Office of Public Defense. This is really important to know, and I think it gets lost in it. The individual must have current charges with, to be eligible with no document, documentation of guilt that has been entered into the program. What that means is they've already been charged. They've, it is a pre-diversion program as opposed to a post-diversion program, like a deferred program. So, they're in the stages of the, the beginning of the criminal case. They also must be assessed by a, they call it an SUD, but it's really about a drug alcohol assessment person that's qualified and licensed in the state of Washington, that has identified the individual as a high-need, high-risk, based on an assessment by that individual. It also is to be eligible that you think to the extent that the prosecution, it's intent to not have any amended charges down just to be eligible to get in the program, so that's, that's not the case. And as I spoke briefly previously, the cases that are generally eligible are Class B, Class C felony crimes like forgery, possession of stolen property, theft, malicious mischief, burglary, and the second grade and residential burglary. Other felonies may be considered, but that's, again, as I said at the prior meetings, that is determined by the prosecutor. They're the gatekeepers of the people that could be eligible, and they are the ones that are the ones that are really the important factor of trying to determine if the person's eligible or ineligible. As I indicated, there are a number of offenses that are not eligible, and as I've indicated, that generally is a serious violent crime or any sex crimes or any crimes that, that just wouldn't necessarily be in the public interest to have them in Drug Court. And to give you an idea of how this process works, they have to be, criminal charge being pending. They also, to the extent that it's generally brought by a public defender or an attorney, defense attorney, indicating that this person would be eligible for Drug Court, and they generally speak to the prosecutor. In this matter, and the prosecutor, as I said, is a gatekeeper. The prosecutor also, within the confines of their responsibility, reach out to law enforcement. Obviously, the law enforcement have a role to play in to determine if they're eligible or not eligible. And to that extent, once all those qualifications are pre-reviewed, the Drug Court team determines if this person's a good fit for Drug Court, and it is an extensive process. There's, as I've indicated, that there's a team of professionals, including myself, and case managers, prosecutors, and local agencies to the extent that assist us in the recovery issues of the defendant. So, I wanted to kind of give you a little bit of background, because I know a number of things have changed, but that's basically a thumbnail nail of the eligibility. As you know, it is a pre-diversion program. It usually takes about 18 to 24 months, depending on the individual. It is also... It is also a highly supervised program to the extent that individuals that enter in the program, it's voluntary. There are a number of things that the defendant gives up by entering the program. One, to a right to a speedy and public trial. That means that they stipulate to all the police reports and in essence, give up the right to a trial. So if they fail to comply with all the terms and conditions of Drug Court, it, the termination of an individual is left up to me that, or the judicial officer if they have failed to meet those issues and finding of guilt beyond a reasonable doubt. So it eliminates the need for a jury. Why is that important? Well, jury costs are very expensive. It's also expensive to the extent of many partners within the justice system that are stakeholders and that don't have to incur cost for a number of those individuals that, you know, that otherwise would have been subject to a jury trial. So it, it is also beneficial to the defendant because they get the opportunity, and I don't want to mix words, is that they get an opportunity to be clean and sober, change their life, and get their cases dismissed. And so that, that is an important part to the defendant's entering the program. And as I, I want to make sure it's really articulate. It's a voluntary program and it, and it's, it's something that each defendant has to think carefully about entering the program. So that's kind of a thumbnail about that. So let's go to some of the good news that I have wanted to give you an update. Previously, I talked about the recidivism rate at both board meetings and I want to, first of all, thank Michelle, Benton County Prosecutor's Office, as a prosecutor. At the last meeting, there were some discussions about the recidivism rate to the extent that we were not running a nationwide search of all graduates to determine what that recidivism rate was. And I want to thank her for that because I asked her after the board meeting with the Franklin County Commissioners to go through all graduates in the last three years to find out how many have re-offended and how many have not re-offended. I've given that data to the Benton County because I had it updated before, before I met with them, so I want to just thank her for it. When I formed the Franklin County Board, specific numbers, and I know that Tiffany, I hope, I trust she did, sent you an email, some updated recidivism and some updated manual and manuals about Drug Court. But I think it's imperative to, to bring it up again. In the last three years, Drug Court has graduated 79 individuals, 65 from Benton County and 14 from Franklin County. A total number of re-offenders in that three-year time frame is Benton County five, Franklin County zero. Total number of participants with current pending, excuse me, pending charges right now is two in Benton County and one in Franklin County. After giving the, the percentage of participants that have successfully completed and the ones that have re-offended, we're at, a new conviction rate for the last three years is 6.33 percent. I also wanted to give you an update on the issues that the court, or at least that I, that I brought up with respect to some changes with Benton County. Currently Benton County, and I know Michelle's back there listening, we're in about, for Benton County, let me back up. Benton County has 50 participants pursuant to the joint resolution. Franklin County has 20 that can participate in the program. Currently with Benton County, we're about 52 to 53 people in the program and about 25 to 28 pending to get into the program. Franklin County has 11. That's an increase from the last time I spoke to you of one and there might be one more that might be in the waitlist, so that, we're hoping it's right around 12. So the total we have right now that are either in the program, want to get in the program is about 93. Some are, don't quote me on, on the exact numbers. The other issues with staffing I brought up with you is that we are now fully staffed. We have two full-time case managers that we hired to take over for the vacancies that we've lost. What's important to know about them, they are also certified in the state of Washington to do a drug and alcohol assessment. So why is that important? One, once we get notification that an individual is, may be eligible, these two individuals can go into the jail or make contact with them and do the initial assessment. Saves time and effort of Drug Court to get them into the program if they are qualified or not. We also have a full-time prosecutor for Franklin County. I want to thank Mr. Shaw, Mr. Sant for hiring that individual. He, he is a full-time Drug Court prosecutor, has extensive experience in Drug Court, comes from a different jurisdiction with some unique knowledge about Drug Court, so I'm really happy about that. He's, I appreciate Daniel Silvern's, you know, stepping in and doing Drug Court, but this individual is just, is bringing a wealth of knowledge to help us to, to look at other, other Drug Courts from around the state. So we're very happy. We're fully staffed and ready to go on that issue. The other issues that I spoke about that was a challenge to the court, which are still going to be challenges because there are budgetary issues, additional staff to help us increase Benton County Drug Court to get to the numbers we need, also not just case managers, but also a secretary. We also have some issues with, with respect to pay and then a little bit about, I talked to you about housing, about Oxford Housing and stuff like that, and I've been dealing with a little bit of challenges with secure and safe housing for the individuals that come out of a 30-day treatment. We're working with Kyle Sullivan with Benton County to try to get some housing for these folks. Why is that important? Because all therapeutic courts will need secure housing for all their individuals that come out of long-term care, usually a 30-day or 60-day treatment, and we're, we're still working on that to make that a reality. And there are some other challenges that we have to overcome to get that done. But again, that, that's kind of the update. I wanted to make sure that I told the Board the positives and where we're going and how the recidivism rate has decreased and I'm willing to, to answer any of your questions if you have anything with respect to the.
Questions, Commissioners? Yes, Mr. Lawrence.
Just a couple of comments. Judge, and all the judges, thank you guys for all coming. I appreciate that. I know, just to go revisit what you said, it's a comprehensive program. It takes time to get and graduate through it. The success rate is high. From the numbers you've showed us before, it's, it's a positive thing. It changes lives for sure. I've seen that. And even upon graduation, you know, I've seen you do that there at the courthouse and you have families there, you have friends there, they tell their story. I was shocked the first time I went. There were several police chiefs there. The sheriffs were there. The prosecutor was there. It's a big thing. It's a big deal for them to go ahead and go through the program and graduate. So I just want to say thank you all for what you do. I think that's important for us to have in our community and it changes those lives where they're not re-offending. A lot of them are moving forward and that's a positive thing, so thank you.
So Judge, you and I and your predecessors in Drug Court have had numerous discussions over the years about recidivism rates and especially about data and what data were available, what additional data could be reasonably made available. NCIC searches are the first that have happened in, in my recollection, at least going back 15 years. So I want to start off by saying thank you for, for seeing that through. My position has always been, as I think the record well shows, is that I'm, I'm an advocate and a fan for Drug Court, but I've always been concerned that we didn't have a good picture of our outcomes and that, and we really, I think, benefit from knowing that. And these numbers candidly are better than I expected to see, not a lot better, but they are better than I expected to see and I'm thankful for that. And I certainly think that the investments in Drug Court are a good investment, if not an excellent investment, for the community. It just frankly doesn't cost that much to operate this program against the cost of prosecuting and incarcerating people who, who re-offend on serious crimes. So I suspect everybody in the room is probably pretty much on the same page with those. So I don't want you to mistake this next question for anything suggesting a lack of faith in the process, but to me, when you spoke about what the goals and the objectives are of the program, and I did my best in shorthand to catch most of it, but, but it appears that the focus is not just on preventing people or persuading people not to re-offend, commit additional crimes, but also to help them abandon their, their drug history and drug habits and drug use. And so these numbers reflect the percentages and the numbers that have re-offended with serious crimes. But they don't really give us any direct insight as to whether or not the graduates of the program are back using substances. And I think it would be statistically a mistake to assume that because somebody might be back reusing, that they would naturally re-offend. On the contrary, I think you could make a pretty good case for the fact that the graduates of the program, for a given number that go back to reusing, there's a smaller percentage that re-offend because they've had that experience already. So the, the point that I'm, I'm driving to here is that I think you've illustrated that in terms of the public benefit of people not re-funding and committing crimes, this is, this is a real win and congratulations to everybody who's involved and who has been over the years. From a human perspective, is there anything that we can do to get a sense of whether or not the re-offense numbers and the recidivism reuse numbers are on the same plane? From, from what I've read, recidivism rates for addicted meth users are exceedingly high, well north of 90 percent, which obviously would be completely inconsistent with the 6.33 re-offense rate. So is there anything that we can do via the drug program to not only get a sense of those people who are not re-offending, but also those who might need additional assistance?
First of all, Commissioner, thank you for your, your kind words. First of all, let me, you said a lot there and I want to make sure I address that first one. One, the, the pending cases, you always challenge me and I love the challenge. I just want to reiterate, I don't know if the five offenders are, committed serious crimes. I don't know what they committed, so that's another thing that I'm sure Michelle and I will talk about and try to put that in, in there because I, it could be something simple, you know, I don't know.
Could be minor.
Minor, and, and I don't know that. But we certainly could put that in the data the next time I come in front of you, what type of cases that have re-offended, because you, you should know. And as I said to you before, it's important, data is important. Correct data is also important. With respect to the, your, your second comment about how do we know they didn't re-offend, but are they still using? That's a great, that's a great question. Well, so there's a couple of solutions. We, we reinstituted the alumni program for a Drug Court, which is also an important part. I will tell you, I've had, again, I'm trying to temper my thoughts on this, but we've, we've tried to do a Facebook page and we've tried to do some, some social media, but it has come with some challenges to the extent of what we can and can't say, what, who controls the Facebook page, but it's really important that we re-energize that because that may provide some data with respect to, you know, they may not be committing crimes, but they still might go back to using. I don't know. And the, the second part is that, again, I don't mean to be critical, I, I just don't have a crystal ball. I mean, everybody has their own demons and to the extent.
Sure.
You know, that, that they may keep it better hidden, better under wraps, but I think the solution that I see is, one, after they graduate, we still need to be in contact with them.
Right.
Trying to help them.
That's my point.
We just don't say, see ya, you're gone, you're out of Drug Court now. We always encourage them to come back, but it's really, you know, it's important that that alumni program really be robust and actually supported by Drug Court. So I, I think the only thing that I could come up with is, is that we need to do a better job of that, that alumni program. And I know that there's some active people that have recently graduated, that have kind of re-energized it and I will be real candid, I will, I will do my best to try to get that backing up and, and it really is a community effort to the extent, but we have to be the champion, I believe. Drug Court needs to be the champion of after they graduate to kind of follow up and check up on them.
And just one other quick question. Remind me if you would, how many years has Drug Court been operating now?
That's a great ques, I'll say it, 20 years.
20 years.
20 years and 342 graduates as of July 20th, and the longest therapeutic court, for the longest time, as you know, Commissioner. It was it. Drug Court was the only thing we had.
Yeah, so I'll just close with this note, which is the most important data are the most recent data, the last three years. And we could look back at the previous 15, 20 years and, and I, I would be fearful of even seeing what those statistics look like. I hope and believe we're doing a better job today than we have in the past, but I do want to just thank you for the focus not just on preventing re-violations of the law, but in fact, trying to find a way to support people post-graduation and frankly, bring them back in to help encourage the people going through now. I understand from what you said that you're doing that, so thank you and if we can help, let me know.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Dillon.
Thank you, Commissioner Ditter. I think, if I recall, I think it started in juvenile court. Didn't Drug Court start first in juvenile?
Again, that was before my time. I thought, I thought it was.
I just remember working with juvenile, trying to get the funding for Drug Court. And I was a skeptic when I first heard about it in the legislature, to be honest, you know, as a police officer, yeah, right. But, you know, then I did my research and found out that there was, there was a lot of data available nationwide about the program, so I became a supporter. But our issue though, that you still kind of brought up, is that there's open slots and there's people waiting. Is there any effort, is there a way to use those open slots if they're not being used in Benton County, if they're not being used in Franklin County, that we can fill those slots up?
That's a really great question and I kind of alluded to it, but I didn't want to make another elected official upset at me, but I did speak to another elected official about being upset and, and I think you know who I'm talking about. As I pull, so let me ask, answer your question first. The open slots for Franklin County are Franklin County spots. That's, we're about eight. But in Benton County, there is no slots open. But I, I will tell you historically, and I, Michelle back there might be able to affirm, we, we always had between 20 and 30 on the waitlist just waiting. And to the extent, they would just keep coming to court, waiting for someone to graduate and we thought that was a bad idea. And so what we've come up with is we want to add 10 more to Benton County just on our own to try to, in a good faith effort, to show the Commissioners that we're trying to get more people off the criminal docket, to save money on the Office of Public Defense, prosecutors having to handle it, the cases, and, and just take those on because there's just such a need. So we're, we're over. If you caught the number, we are over and we're hoping to be over to about 60 for Benton County and that's our goal. And if I could take all of them, I would. The challenge is, is that it creates additional stress or, or impact to the Clerk's Office and other staff members and I've made a commitment and I'm, I'm getting in the weeds, but you asked. Drug Court is always on Thursdays. Our staffing is in the morning and then our court is in the afternoon from 1:30 to 4:30. I've made a commitment that I would not increase the, the court time. I'm leaving it at half a day. I'm also not impacting the clerk to the extent of the number of cases that are on, so I'm trying to hold the line about 30. So I'm trying to hold the line about 30 max per Thursday, so that will give us enough time to really, or for me and the staff, for 30 individuals, we think is between 25 and 30, that we can get a status update on them. And I've told her that I, I've told the staff to the extent will be done by 4, 4:15, so I won't impact the clerk's office or any other public official to the extent that, by increasing the number. But I am, yes, I'm, I'm on the record, I'm, I'm pushing it to 60. I could be coming next year in front of you to help me get some more money to increase the, the amount. It, it's just the right thing to do. It's just the right thing to do. If I could do more, I would.
Commissioner Ellers.
Just, just, I guess I'm looking at the bottom line, and it's not a golden bullet. We know that. It's more of a, an arrow, an additional arrow in our quiver to go ahead and reduce crime and substance abuse here in both Benton and Franklin County. So once again, I think it's a positive program. We need to continue to use it. Once again, it's just another arrow in our quiver to, to help the community. Thank you.
Commissioner Mullen, I think you turned your mic on.
Oh, I was just gonna say, you know, thank you for the hard work, and obviously the statistics show that the program is working, and I really do appreciate it. And just, if there's anything we can do to help you, let us know. The statistics, in my opinion, are impressive, so thank you.
So Judge, to add to that, I'd just say, great job with the information that you brought in today, and, and more than an arrow in our quiver, it's a second chance for individuals that are, that are usually young, have a clean slate moving forward in life, and I think that's the most, most important thing. You mentioned that Benton County has 20 to 25 people waiting, and we have 11 to 12, right?
You, let me, you have 11 actively in the program.
Oh, we have 11.
As of today, of your 20.
Oh, okay.
And we have one for Franklin County, I think we're gonna get, so you'll get to 12.
Gotcha.
I'm hopeful by the end of the, end of the month.
Okay, and then, and then in Benton County?
There are 25 to 28-ish that could be in the program right now.
But their limit is 50. So they're not at their limit.
They're at the max, 50. 50 are in the program.
Oh, they have 50 in the program.
I could put 76 to 78 are in their program right now.
Okay.
I, I...
Thank you for clarifying that.
The resolution says 50. I'm, I just told you, I'm not following the resolution. Let me just be real clear. I'm, I'm adding more because the need is in the community.
Yes, yes.
And so, did you catch that?
All right, well, I really appreciate the clarification. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And I want to get to 20. I, I know you have 20 here.
I hope not.
Well, I do, sir. I, I want to be real, I, I know they're there, I just, I just got to find them.
So Judge, the process, as I understand it, for someone to enter into the program begins with a referral from defense counsel?
Generally, yes. And that, the defense, thank you for the question, because that's, that's important. I think it gets lost.
Yeah, if you could walk through that process, it might shed some light on maybe why Franklin County is not using all 20 of its slots.
Well, there's a lot of variables, so I'm just going to be real candid with you. It's a lot of variables, but generally, it, it's the discussion with the defendant by the, by the defense attorney. The defense attorney is bound to go over the police report, find out if there's any issues with respect to if they were under the influence of something during the, the time of the crime, or if the defense attorney and the, the individual find that, I think you have a substance abuse problem, they would refer it to the prosecutor. That's the first line of it, or the defendant can petition on his own. But generally, the gatekeeper is the prosecutor, and if the prosecutor doesn't know there's a, a, a person that is charged with a crime that has substance abuse history, they wouldn't know, and they, they just wouldn't. Unless they read the report and also said, "Hey, you know, maybe this person would be a good candidate for Drug Court."
Are, are prosecutors permitted to have a conversation like that with, with those accused individuals, with the defendants?
No, with their attorneys.
But they...
If there's an attorney, it'd be unethical.
Well, indeed. I didn't ask the question without knowing the answer.
I just, it, it would be the conversation between attorneys.
Right.
But if the, the, the individual is not represented, and he's representing himself, yes, they could.
Then they could. So, and as you stated earlier, it's entirely voluntary on the part of the individual.
Correct. And, and, and once they've entered the program, it's no do-overs. You're in or you're out. And so I, I was waiting for you, Commissioner, to ask me, and I just know this is going to come up.
I waited.
I just, I knew it was going to come out of your mouth here in a second. How many have been terminated? Great question, I don't know.
Okay. So...
But it brings up a good point.
Well, yeah, because previously you made some comments that I think a reasonable person could interpret your well-intended comments to suggest that perhaps Franklin County's quota wasn't being fully used because somebody or something in the process wasn't doing their piece. And so I wanted to get some clarity. One, it has to be voluntary on the part of the person who would participate in the program. Two, generally, it requires the defense counsel to reach out to the prosecutors and, and ask for support for that process. And in some instances, but the majority, or the minority clearly, sounds like the prosecutor might be able to affect some interest, but, but that gets a little tenuous with, with the ethics issue. So really, the driver is, defense counsel, if they think it's a good candidate, needs to reach out to the prosecutor's office. My understanding is that that level of outreach from the defense counsel in this county, and the numbers would bear this out, has been somewhat less vigorous than in Benton County, given that the ratio of seats 20 to 50 somewhat mirrors our population comparison, right? So unless you argue that there's some real difference between the two communities, which there's not, if, if the demographics match up, then the number of applicants logically would. So I agree with your previous assessment that it needs to be looked at, and appreciate your help in shining some light in the fact that these really are driven out of the defense side.
Yeah, there are many factors, and that, I mean, obviously to the extent...
Yeah.
They, they sit in the, the defense attorney sits in the best position to make an objective decision if this person's, well, first of all, qualified, eligible, and can the person do it? I mean, there may be a lot of people that are eligible and want the program, it's a difference to get through the program. Can they get through the program? Because it's pretty vigorous. I mean, it's, and, and I use the analogy, it's like Department of Corrections. We're like Department of Corrections. We're on them all the time, and we're, we're making sure they comply.
Is it permissible, and would you, if it is permissible, would you support the notion of maybe the Drug Court Program Leadership Meeting with Defense Counsel in both counties to provide them some of the information that you provided us today, and maybe in the process encourage them to look even more closely at potential eligible applicants?
Your question is difficult to answer. First, it would not be in the purview of Drug Court with the Office of Public Defense. I like the way it is right now, but can we encourage them and, and give them information about it? Yes.
How could we do that?
Well, that's a real great question. Well, I can tell you some things that I've done in the past. One, I would, I would go to the local bar association, their luncheons, and have a, have a meeting. I would call, I have done in, in the past where I've done a, a defense and prosecutor meeting, somewhat dicey, where I can bloom into something else, but more of an information program, yes. I, I think it's still, it, within my realm that I would be able to get the attorneys, not only the bar association, but also the prosecutors and the defense bar in both counties, to have like an information, and I, and I haven't done that for a while. I took over about two years ago for Judge Rung, who's done it for a long time, and I have, I have not done that. But that's a great, great option, and I'm willing to do it.
I think we all want to make use of these slots. I'm just looking for a way to ensure that the people who are eligible are aware and that their counsel is fully up to speed on the opportunity. And if you come up with any thoughts on how I can help with that, let me know, please.
Thank you.
So Judge, there's been a Commissioner waiting patiently. Commissioner McKay would like to say something.
Thank you, Super Bowl champion Commissioner Didi, I mean Commissioner Didi, sorry, I apologize. No, I just, I appreciate this. To me, it's tough love, right? I've got a gentleman that works for me, sorry, I'm kind of emotional about it. Been an alcoholic forever, and I think he's going through this right now. So I think there's a lot of people out there that need to stay busy and work and not be lazy, so I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, that's why I do it. That's why all the team does it, is for something like that, change people's lives, and, and yeah, there's no amount of money, no amount of, that can ever replace the gratitude that I have for the opportunity to be in Drug Court and watch people change their lives, one person at a time. I, I just, Commissioner, thank you, and I, I, we will do our best.
You are, and keep it up. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. All right. Thanks again.
All right, well, we've covered the two topics. That's it for the agenda today, and if there is no other business that we can talk about, this meeting is adjourned.
Commissioner Didi.